I purposely did not talk all morning so I would save it for this town hall meeting. I'm so happy you're all here to hear about and meet the new faces of research and grants on this campus. If you don't know me, my name is Melinda Barnard. I'm a professor in the Communication Department and I am the interim vice provost with one of my responsibilities being associate vice president for ORSP and pre-grant awards on this campus. It's something that I feel very passionate about and I'm really pleased that I get a chance to try and affect some change and really develop the support for research on this campus. I won't be talking very much today luckily, and they put me over here so I won't be contagious with them. It's not because they don't like me, I promise you. But each person is going to stand up and talk with their piece of PowerPoint because we felt we had a lot of information we wanted to give you and we wanted you to be able to hear it and see it at the same time. So we're going to start with some brief remarks by one of the professors who's very involved with research on this campus, Paul Cushman, because I think it's important to put in context research here at Sonoma State and what it really means to us. So Paul's going to start us out.
Great. Thanks a lot, Melinda, and thanks for making this happen and thanks to all of you for coming. As Melinda said, what I wanted to do is just talk a little bit about the importance of research and scholarship activities on campus. And I think this group is very aware that university faculty all over the world wear many hats and play diverse roles. We are teachers and educators, we are mentors and advisors of students, we provide a wide range of service to the university as well as the community, and we are also scholars. We are, or at least we claim to be, we are experts in our field and we are practitioners of research and scholarly activity. And the importance of scholarship, that is, the importance of faculty actively engaged in scholarship is clearly recognized in the CSU mission statement. There are two objectives which directly relate to that. One is to advance and extend knowledge, that's clearly scholarship, learning, and culture, especially throughout California. And then secondly, and more directly, to provide an environment in which scholarship, research, creative, artistic, and professional activities are valued and supported. The importance of scholarship being conducted by faculty is also clearly recognized in the most latest draft of the CSU, or the SSU strategic plan. In particular, there are three objectives which address research. One is to provide a nurturing and supportive environment for faculty scholarship. Another states that an objective is to support comprehensive professional development and training opportunities for faculty and staff. And then lastly, to expand support for research, scholarship, and instruction from external So universities in general, and the CSU in particular, recognize the importance of faculty being actively engaged in research and scholarship. And there are a whole range of benefits of such activity to a university environment and to the world at large. Faculty engaged in research maintains and invigorates the intellectual vibrancy of any campus community. It allows for new discoveries in our various fields to be made and to expand the frontiers of knowledge. Active scholarship allows faculty to contribute to solving key problems that confront our society and our world. Also, being engaged actively in research allows faculty to remain current in and really enthusiastic and interested in the areas of inquiry that the faculty teaches about. And I think especially important is being actively engaged in scholarship allows faculty to provide students with incredible opportunities to get involved in our research. And that happens all over this campus and campuses all over the world. And I think it's one of the most important benefits of having an active scholarship program. Last but not least, faculty involved in scholarship often leads to funds being brought to the university that would not otherwise be there. And this comes in the form of indirect costs, a subject of great interest on every campus. If you've seen the equipment budgets for any of our schools lately, you know that they are dwindling, especially in tough times. Grants and contracts can provide a tremendous amount of equipment, and I know at least in my department, but I'm sure in lots of other departments, that equipment also gets used in instruction. And then often we are able to, with grant funds, hire personnel, so soft money positions. So for a variety of reasons, not only does active scholarship add to the vibrancy of our university, but it also helps provide resources that are often in short supply. Grants and contracts are really the engine that drives a lot of faculty research and scholarship, and this is not news to anyone here in this group. But none of us love dealing with bureaucracy. But if you're going to be involved in scholarship and rely on grants and contracts, I think it's critical for us faculty to take advantage of the services that are provided by the Office of Research and Sponsored Programs and Sponsored Programs Administration. And we have newly hired Julia Arno, who is a real expert at helping faculty find new funding sources. And Jeff Wilson is also going to be talking about the administrative services that are available to us. I think it's important for us to understand and abide by the pre- and post-award procedures that occur on campus. Not only does that keep everyone happy, but it also makes our life a lot easier. And I've learned that the hard way. During part of my career, I wasn't particularly good at these procedures, and I'm trying to get better at these procedures, although Laurie Mattinson, you can't say anything about our recent rule. Laurie keeps me in line. And I think it's also important for faculty to provide grants administrators with constructive feedback as to how the procedures and processes here on campus can be approved. So I think there's a great opportunity for a lot of exchange between the faculty trying to do scholarship and the administrators who are trying to facilitate us in that endeavor. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Paul. I think that it's really important for all of us to understand how research permeates the entire university, not just the faculty side, as you're going to see in just a minute. And also, I hope you can tell as you meet these new faces, we are really a team and we're really enjoying working with each other, and we are really trying to create an environment on this campus that fosters and nurtures research. And we really mean that, and I hope that that will come across to you. So what I want to show you is the structure that exists now on the campus because some of you may not be aware, you've heard pieces of it, and you may not be that clear about exactly how research funnels through this campus. And one of the things that I have trouble with are the acronyms that happen. I've been learning a lot in this job, and I tend to use the terms grants and contracts, which has very specific meaning. And then the Office of Research and Sponsored Programs, Sponsored Programs Administration have very specific meetings, and it feels, as a communications professor, it drives me crazy because it feels very, very clumsy, but this is what we have to work with. So one of the things that you may not be aware of is that actually there are two of us that are overseeing this whole arena on campus, myself and Letitia Coats. Letitia's not here today because she's on loan for a CMS project, otherwise she would be here also. But I serve as the associate vice president for research and sponsored programs, that's in the policy on the campus. And then Letitia serves as the associate vice president for administration and finance. We actually do not have a position of chief research officer on this campus as titled. I get that title because I'm on the academic side. I go to the meetings because I'm on the academic side. But I want you to understand that the positions are very parallel, and Letitia and I are both working with research on this campus. Underneath me then is the Office of Research and Sponsored Programs, the pre-award piece. How do we get funds to the campus? How do we get faculty aware of what's out there? And we have a new director that you're going to hear from in just a minute, Julia Arno, I'm very excited about, comes to us from Dominican College where she was in charge of the same office at the both pre- and post-award at Dominican College. And she's going to talk to you about this piece of it. We also, of course, have Carol Hall, who's been with us for many years, really is a stalwart in that office and knows the history and the culture and the mainstay for helping us move the programs through. On the other side then, we have what's known as the SPA office, and no, they don't have a hot tub over there, and they don't give massages, I'm sorry. But we refer to them lovingly as the SPA office. And this is Jeff Wilson's arena, and this is, once you get the money, once you've been awarded the grant, what happens on this campus for the implementation and the disbursement of those grant monies. And Jeff will be talking to you about his piece. Underneath him, he has two people, Laurie Mattson and Barbara Crandell. We're very lucky because Barbara moved over from ORSP, so she has the knowledge on both sides. And Laurie comes to us with a huge amount of knowledge. So we have two people that are our project administrators, as Hall says, to keep our principal investigators in line.
A challenging job.
A very challenging job. So under Academic Affairs, this is just a list of the principal investigators from fall of '08. And I got this list, this is from PeopleSoft. If I missed anybody that's here, please don't be offended. I just wanted you to see the range of the types of people that are doing research from the academic side. This list of people account for $1.6 million worth of monies coming to this campus for research. Now, the other piece that I didn't know about until I took this job is that all research and grants on this campus go through the pre-award office on this campus. And you may not be aware of the fact that, let's see if we're going to get, here it comes, that we have two other arenas that produce monies, that get grants on this campus. Student Affairs has a huge volume of grants. They sent me the information this morning, $2.3 million of grant monies go through Student Affairs. Those grants are applied for through our Office of Research and Sponsored Programs. And those are the grants that help the learning skills, that, I listed some of the things. There's a grant connected with children's schools, university support and program services, all of the different grants under there are absolutely amazing, and they really help our students while they're here and also going on to graduate school. And also, you may not be aware that there are some grants that come through Administration and Finance. I put the police department down because currently they have a grant that works with alcohol training with students on campus, again, that was applied for through the pre-award process. Finally, I want to show you, and I'll be talking about it at the very end, we have a new position that we are developing, and today is the first day we're announcing this, a faculty research associate who will be working with the Office of ORSP and will be helping us to bridge gaps that we have between the faculty and the processes on the campus. And I'll be telling you a little bit more about that at the very end. So now what I want to do is turn it over to Julia Arno, who is going to be talking to you about the first piece, which is the pre-award piece. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm the communications professor, I forgot, I had one more slide. I wanted to point out to you that we actually function under three different sets of policies. Again, this has been an eye-opener for me, that we have executive orders from the chancellor's office that are very, very clearly defined in terms of what happens on this campus. We are a state institution, not a private institution, and so we have guidelines we have to follow, both about who can be principal investigators, how the monies get worked on. And it is like pulling apart a very complex puzzle in order to understand all of those guidelines. We have our own grants and policies, a grants and contracts policy, which I urge you to go to the website, University Affairs, and take a look at, that also is very specific. That's what identifies my job and Letitia's job, and this policy was redone in 2004 and is right now undergoing another review. So there are some new things in it that you may want to pay attention to. And then finally, of course, every individual grant comes in with its own requirements that have to be met. And that in itself, we have to be very careful of, both when we're applying for them and when we're administering them. Okay, now I'm going to turn it over to Julie. Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. That's actually a nice segue into my section. For all of you who have not had the chance to, haven't had the chance to talk to individually yet or haven't been to a prior training, I'm actually an attorney by trade, and one of the things that I moved away from when I got out of the mainstream legal world was a lot of the red tape that happens in the legal profession, and guess where I am. And, you know, along with Melinda, it's been a learning process for me as well because I came from a small private institution, and pretty much the sign-off for all proposals just was my office and the provost. And now I'm in the state system, and there I can test to Executive Order 890 and all the other internal requirements that are part of the university framework for public institution. I have gone to school on that as well, and initially it was a little daunting for me coming from a private institution, but now that I have a grasp on it, I'm happy to say that I am here to help you navigate through that process. And if there is something that I miss, we can learn it together and we can both laugh about it, hopefully. Okay, so one of the things that a lot of people think about when they think about pre-award is this, okay, the little man jumping through the hoops, because it doesn't, you know, when you think about it, okay, what does this have to do with my proposal? My proposal, my grant is for doing research on trying to keep the frog population up in Northern California viable. Why does that have to do, anything to do with indirect facilities management? Because none of my stuff is going to be on campus, so why do I have to go through that hoop? And I get that kind of question a lot in the process. My job, truly, my job here is to take, to make this happen. I don't want you to feel like you're jumping through hoops in the pre-award process because if you are, then I haven't done my job. Because my greatest hope is that you get that funding. And if somewhere in the process you get stymied because you just, you know, you don't want to get signature number 10 on the signature of 12, 12 signature lines, that's not your job. That's my job and that's Carol's job. And what we're here to do is to make that process seamless for you. So I really don't, if you find yourself frustrated, even when you go online and you look at the form, the proposal endorsement form that you have to fill out, and you just, you look at it and you say, "I just can't handle this," call me. Because I can walk you through that form, and if it's really onerous and you have a real timeline commitment, we can talk about it, we can come to some kind of working plan. Because I don't want the procedural processes here to get in your way in getting that proposal into the funder. Again, as I said, we want to help this process be seamless for you. We want you to feel like we're on your side. My hope is, I did pre-award and post-award in my last job, so I'm very fluid with some of the audit issues that come up on some of these grants. But you're at the pre-award phase, you don't even know if you're going to get this proposal. So what I want to do is to help simplify the pre-award process for you. There are many variables that you just won't know until you get that award of funding, and quite frankly, half the time, if you do, if you are fortunate enough to get an award, it's not exactly what you asked for anyway. So you're going to have to reduce your budget requirements after you get the award. So we're going to have to sit down again and rework this thing. So what I want to help you do in the submission process is streamline it, help you get through the procedural requirements so that you can get that proposal in the door. Two of the other things that we do besides submitting the proposals and working with the procedural requirements is working with the Faculty Subcommittee on Sponsored Programs to manage the internal grant awards. And right now we have one, two, three, four, if we get travel in the future, that'll be four, awards, and we hope to have more internal awards. What do I mean by internal awards? These are the risk cap funds, mini-grants, and we now have the new IPQ program that I hope you are all working on your proposal for. This is to encourage interdisciplinary projects and to encourage folks to go seek outside funding for those projects. So that's due on the 24th, Karina?
No.
24th of April. If you have any questions about that process, I am getting calls right now, folks who are trying to put their proposals together. I would encourage you to go on the ORSP Office of Research and Sponsored Programs website and check that out because it's a new proposal. We hope to be having more in the future so that there's actually a better opportunity for folks that have never gotten funding before to start using the internal awards, to start thinking about how they can get funding for their projects. The other things that we do are working with the IRB, human subjects, making sure that that process goes smoothly, and Dwayne Dove has been very helpful in guiding me through that process on campus, and I'm very encouraged to have the framework that we do. We also file reports for issues regarding research misconduct and other federal requirements that have to do with the conduct of our researchers on campus. And this takes a lot of Carol's time, because Carol is responsible for managing all the faculty and students' pay issues, payroll issues, and reporting requirements on the mini-grants, and she also works very closely with Dwayne on the IRB approvals. So those are some of the things that y'all may not know that we do. I just wanted to briefly, briefly touch on the proposal endorsement process and just make it very clear that what we're trying to do with the proposal endorsement process is head off issues before they become problems at the university. And this process has really been put into place to help the institution, but also to help the faculty and staff that are applying for these grants, because, you know, what has come up several times in this process is, in the process of filling out this form, I'll look at it and I will notice that that faculty member is going to need an institutional letter of support or some other kind of document that needs to be completed by the university before they can submit that proposal. And often, especially with government, it'll be on page 64 of the 89-page application, and it clues me in to look for that. And so then I can call and say, "Hey, I noticed that you indicated this on the proposal. This is an NIH grant, aren't they going to need X, Y, and Z?" And that will get it so that we can get that document before the day that we're trying to upload all of the information. And it's really a time saver in the long run. I know when you look at the form, some of you think, "Oh, this is ridiculous," but I'm telling you, it has saved us on quite a few occasions now. Since I've been here a little over two months, we've submitted about 25 proposals, and a number of those, it was the PEF form that triggered us to the fact that we needed additional documentation. So it has worked to faculty benefit on a few occasions, so that's just one thing I wanted to point out. The other thing I wanted to just briefly say is that most of the proposals now are online. So that's added a whole nother layer to what's happening over in our office that I wanted to make you all aware of. Grants.gov is in a really bad state right now. That's the main framework for the government grant submissions now, and all the submissions are online. They're talking on a government level about what they're going to do, you know, words like "the frame is crashing" and all. Suffice to say that what happens with us for that is it sometimes, sometimes it takes two or three days to get through that system and get your proposal submitted. So the last minute rushing in, I'm here to say that I cannot guarantee you, if you come in two days before that proposal's going to happen, that we can get it through the online system. As much as I would like to assist you, we may not be able to help you. So I just wanted to encourage you all to get all of your documents to me no less than five days. This is beyond the proposal routing process, the proposal endorsement form. That's just for your basic three components. You know, your last-minute narrative changes or your long scope of work that's like 15, 20 pages long that you may not have honed when you had your proposal endorsement form routing, you need to get all of those pieces to me no more, no less than five days before because we need to really address the online system, which is not very fluid at this time. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. My goal year, at the end of this year, is to really get the Office of Research and Sponsored Programs to a new place. My area of expertise, my two areas of expertise are primarily in helping you put your grant proposal together and helping you look for new funding, okay? Those are the two things that I did most in my last job and that I really want to focus on as we move forward in the Office of Research and Sponsored Programs. Now, to be honest with you, I don't have an enormous amount of time to do all that right now because we have a two-person department primarily. But I'm hoping that as things change and we do strategic planning and some restructuring, that my time will be more freed up to help with those two things. And I'm not saying I can't help you with that now. Since I've been here, I've helped write two major proposals and I've done prospect research with folks on a case-by-case basis. So if you have a need, please call me, let's set up some time, let's talk about what you want funded, and I can start to help you with that process. But really, what I hope for the future is to really be able to increase the training for faculty and staff in the area of how to look for funding and set up some resource totals for you so that you can come by and walk through a funding online system that can help you really pinpoint the funders that give money in your area, and also help faculty with how they can set up these proposals. And I will tell you, for those of you who have done government grants, there is a very specific framework for all your areas of funding, and if you've done it, you know it. But for the folks that haven't started to move down this road, when you download that federal application, which I have yet to see one under 10 pages, it can be somewhat daunting. And I would love to be able to have the opportunity to walk through that process with you and to kind of translate it so you could begin to start working on government proposals and private funding. My last institution, half of what I did was private funding. So I'm very fluid on that, and I would love to be able to have the opportunity to give you some more training in that regard. I think that's pretty much it. The final thing that I wanted to say that I think is very important specifically for this campus is that one thing that I'm hopeful that we can do in the future is really raise the profile of the grants that are coming into the institution. And I'm hopeful that the research associate position offering that and getting that assistance, that person will be able to help us do that, and our department will also be doing that within the next year, to really do things like on the website, highlight faculty that are working on specific research projects, put that out in news bites, get a higher profile for the folks that are doing great work here. Specifically also, I would like to highlight the undergraduate work that's going on here, and there are many grants out there that we can get with faculty working with undergraduates. Undergraduate research is a huge evolving area, and because this is a primarily undergraduate institution, I'm really hopeful that we can raise that profile in the future as well. And I think I've way gone over my time. Thank you very much.
We will take questions from you at the very end, but we're going to get through all of our pieces. So now we're going to move to the second piece, which is the post-award, once you get your money in hand. And we have Jeff Wilson, who's our deputy controller, and again, is just a wonderful asset for research and contracts on this campus.
Okay. Like Melinda said, my name is Jeff Wilson and I'm the deputy controller for sponsored programs. I've been at Sonoma State for about two and a half years and have been in sponsored programs for the past eight months. I just want to share with you some of the things that we've done in the past eight months to demonstrate our support for sponsored programs on our campus. Number one, the project administrators and I developed a mission for our department, and it's two parts. The first part is to provide administrative support services to PIs, the project directors, and project staff. The second part is to provide compliance and monitoring oversight.
No, you're just too tall.
To provide compliance and monitoring oversight of post-award activities for sponsored programs administered by the university. I'll say that we believe that these two things are very related. The more involved we are in supporting a project, we feel the better able we'll be to ensure compliance. Some of the steps we've taken to achieve our mission in terms of support. First of all, we've introduced the role of project administrator. Paul referred to that as a grant administrator. We have two full-time project administrators, Laurie and Barbara, and I also serve as a project administrator for a set of grants. The role of the project administrator is to fulfill our service requirements by understanding and evaluating the needs of principal investigators for their programs, frequent communication with principal investigators, not waiting to the end of the process to discover an issue, knowledge development. We talked about how complex sponsored programs can be, and we're continually trying to refine and develop our knowledge of all of the different requirements that the project administrators have. An important one is facilit- An important one is facilitating A&amp;F processes and procedures. This is one that the project administrator is directly responsible for, to the project administrator, helping them work through all of the different procedures that we have. And then finally, developing our staff in the SPOT department in terms of processes and procedures and understanding the needs for different grants. To achieve our mission for compliance, number one, understanding the compliance hierarchy. One federal grant has eight different levels of compliance requirements, starting with federal laws and regulations, going all the way down to Sonoma State requirements. So that's a big area of growth and knowledge that we're working on. Informing principal investigators of compliance requirements is applicable. Project administrators are developing agency-specific knowledge. I work with the Department of Education grants, so I'm developing that knowledge, for example. And then another part of our job is performing internal compliance reviews and questioning inconsistencies. This is important because it's not fun. We don't like interfering with the principal investigator's programmatic work, but it is our responsibility to do this and it's something that our sponsors expect to be Finally, just a few of our challenges that we're continuing to work on. Number one, balancing our support objectives with our compliance objectives. We have to be careful not to step into doing too much on a project because then we wouldn't be able to perform objective compliance reviews. Number two, our collaboration with principal investigators regarding compliance without interfering. So we do have to ask the question, we just have to find a way to do that that doesn't interfere with our work. And finally, developing a depth of knowledge regarding federal, state, sponsor, CSU, and SSU policies and procedures. Once again, this is such a vast amount of reading and delving into these policies and procedures that it's always going to be an ongoing process. These things change weekly. We get weekly updates of things that are changing. So staying on top of those is something that will always be a challenge.
All right. Thank you so much, Jeff. So you can see the structure that we are operating under here on this campus. And I just have one other piece I'd like to talk to you about before we turn it over to questions that you may have. And that is this new faculty research associate position. We are announcing today this position and calling for faculty to apply for it. Carol's going to pass out a sheet that describes it in more detail. It is actually not a new, brand-new position. Currently this year, under the Center for Teaching and Professional Development, we have Carolyn Christensen, who was in the position this year. And she is funded on release time through the first year of faculty development money. Eduardo gave a portion of money to the Center for Teaching and Professional Development for two faculty associate positions. When I took this job in July and then Julia came on in January, and we both realized that the research associate position really was better fit to move over to the Office of Research and Sponsored Programs. And we began to meet with Hall, just as a faculty representative, to kind of hammer out what we saw this position. And I just want to share with you some of the ideas that we have worked on for next year for this position. This is a position that we feel will have a chance to promote, if you will, the value of research on this campus, as Hall explained to you, be a voice, not just for faculty, but for the staff that are involved in research on this campus. We also think that we could use this person to make what's going on on this campus more visible. Again, Julia's time is so taken up with the nuts and bolts and she wants to do more with the prospecting of the grants and the contracts. We'd like to see this person working to make what's going on on this campus more visible. I had the chance at the beginning of this year to go over to the Biology Department, to Nick Kaiser's lab, when the frogs were hatching from this amazing research project he's doing. Turtles! Oh, I'm so sorry!
It was me that brought the frogs up.
You said frogs. I'm so sorry. I'm not a scientist. It was turtles. Nick, I'm so sorry. It was so amazing to see this research that was going on and to understand what he was doing to save this particular species of turtle here at Sonoma State in this lab. It was really exciting to me to see that. And I felt like we needed to bring everybody over to see it so they could really grasp what this is and what's going on and how it makes faculty connect not only with Sonoma State, but with the community and what they're doing. So we really want to try and get that message out. We also want to expand the notion of undergraduate research on this campus. None of us have the time to think about it and develop different ideas and ways we can involve undergraduates in our research. And we also want to keep supporting the graduate research that goes on on this campus. So this is something that this position could do. And then finally, this also could be a position that could be a voice for faculty concerns about processes that we have. And I always see it as kind of a foreign language translator, you know, that can kind of explain the faculty's concerns to the administrators, but also explain what the administrators face, as Julia and Jeff have outlined to you, to the faculty members. That maybe we can get the communication flowing when we have problems, trying to understand why we have the process we do on this campus. And then finally, oh, that's the second piece of it, sorry. And then finally, I would really like to see this person, as well as Julia, getting out to the various research conferences that are out there in which grants and contracts are discussed. I myself go to the CSU Chief Research Officer meetings, but there are many more meetings out there, both within the CSU as a whole and of course, across the nation, that we need to start tapping into and we need to start being there physically so we can hear about the opportunities that are out there and we can start being much more involved with the CSU research. So this is a really exciting position that we're looking to find a faculty member on release time to have next year. And I wanted to sort of end with that so you could hear something that was a positive. It will be funded through faculty development money, so don't worry about your monies being taken away. And I think I'll stop at that and ask if anybody has any questions. And you could probably stand up and speak louder than I'm speaking right now. Do we have any questions about what you've heard today or issues you'd like to raise? Just go ahead, Carolyn.
You just mentioned that this should be funded out of faculty development funds. Can you tell us a little bit more about how this body here, the research, is going to be playing a role with the new faculty development funds that are going online?
Yeah, I can actually give you quite a bit of information. As you know, there's quite a bit of money being given to faculty development. Over $800,000 will be available next year. And what has happened is the discussions have been going on with the provosts and the deans, and I met those meetings, and also with the provost's budget advisory committee. I asked Julia as the director of ORSP, I asked Brett Christie as the Center for Teaching and Professional Development, and also Kathy Charmaz, who runs the writing program for faculty development, to all give me their suggestions for ways that they feel faculty development money could be spent to support research and faculty development. I also asked Karina to give me some information on behalf of FSSP. I'm actually meeting with Eduardo this Friday and I'm going to be presenting all of this to him. He plans to meet with the deans next week to start hammering out more details and then with the budget advisory committee the following week. That doesn't mean it's a done deal at that point, but this is to get something on the table, you know, this semester so we know what we have. And then we will be looking for comments and other ideas. So for example, I may say to him, you know, we would like to increase the internal awards programs. We have IPQ, we'd like another awards program. We won't specify exactly what that program's going to be necessarily at this point, but we would like, I would like him to earmark money for a program. So we are, the talks are going on right now. We'll have a lot more by the week after spring break to put out to the rest of the community about that money. There are obviously competing demands for that money. A portion of the monies will go through the schools, but a portion will remain what we call division-wide, which means these kinds of programs and these kinds of centers will be getting some money to support the programs that they've got. So I'm very excited about what we're going to be doing for faculty development with this money. Mark?
I have a question for Julia. You talked about the incubator projects on campus and working internally to generate projects or proposals that can then go out. Could you elaborate on that a little bit? I just very quickly picked up on one that's going on right now and then any thoughts you have for the future?
Well, specifically, I think I was talking about the IPQ program.
It was.
That is the new interdisciplinary grant proposal that the Faculty Subcommittee on Sponsored Programs put together. And Karina was very instrumental in helping to get feedback from all the faculty on the committee about how to put that proposal together. Basically, the purpose of the proposal is to help encourage faculty to work together from different departments and to come together to look at a project that they might want to get more funding for. Karina, actually, would you?
The part of the basis of creating that program is just that there is a great call for interdisciplinary work externally. So there are many opportunities to support that kind of work and we thought that would be a good place to start. And the faculty on our campus seem to be really good at working across disciplines and it's a nice way to engage students in interdisciplinary thinking. And we thought, what better way than to sort of jumpstart a seed money type program than to offer faculty an opportunity to be creative with that? We didn't put a lot of constraints on what the projects might be. The major constraint is just that we would like to see you take whatever you do with the seed money that you're provided with for your idea and try and get some more money to better facilitate the work that you'd like to do. That's the gist of it. And it was put together with pretty broad consensus across the representatives on FSSP from all the schools.
And I must say, thank you, Karina. I have already gotten numerous calls from faculty that are working together and they have contacted me to say, okay, this is our project that we'd like to get funding for. Can you help us identify some funding sources? And in the body of the proposal, one of the requirements is that you need to put forward one potential funding source. So it starts faculty even thinking about the process of how would we even go out there and look. And so it's been exciting, the feedback I've gotten. The other thing I wanted to point out too is there's a huge push now, and I'm sure you've probably all gotten an email about this stimulus package funding. A lot of that stimulus package funding is interdisciplinary in nature. It's not just one department. One of the things that they've said is they're going to look at researchers who were denied scientific research proposals in the past and try and give some of those people that got good scores, but there wasn't enough money to fund them, some additional money. But the other stimulus grants, a lot of those are interdisciplinary in nature. So, you know, as we get more resources put toward bringing folks from different departments together, there are a lot more government funding opportunities in that arena as well. And I hope in the future to have more of a focus and to get the word out about those and as I'm getting to learn the faculty in each department, really call on people to say, hey, you might want to work with this person over here and we can put this package together.
Other questions? Yes. Richard, sorry.
What I'm hearing today is very encouraging to talk about how to get the faculty and staff, these first, be more involved with these grants and sponsored programs. Being able to get a new team on board, a lot of good ideas, but like anything, specifically, you have to have something to measure by. So I was wondering if there's been any talk about, well, I'm just now, what kind of increase, should we say, if these ideas take hold and start moving forward, should we make that happen by this point?
You know, that's a very good comment. It's something that we haven't done as a team. Julia is working on a strategic plan for her piece and I know that Jeff talks with Letitia about what they're doing, but I will take that piece and I'll take it back to Letitia. I think what you're saying is we're at the point where we can meet and look strategically into the future. This is very exciting. I mean, this is, you guys are hearing our team for the first time. You know, this has really started from the summer and Jeff coming on board and myself and Julia. So I think we're ready, I think I can say to you, yeah, that's a great idea and we're ready to have that kind of conversation. I couldn't have said that to you eight months ago, but I agree with you. I think we could do that kind of strategic planning now. There's another question over here. Yes, Adrian.
Well, it's not really a question, it's more of a statement. Somebody's been doing this sort of research on campus for quite a few years. I would say that the thing that you need to advance this sort of activity is a comprehensive initial procedural plan that actually sets how this stuff is being put into operation. Anthony's never had one, doesn't have one there, so that's one. Certainly, as we're talking about the exciting research we're doing, that's cool, that's my research. But, you know, as the graphic has the old man jumping through the hoop, those of us who do this stuff know, that's where the line is drawn. That is incredibly important. So responsible PIs have to know what university procedural policies are in order to do that. And I'm going to suggest that one way to make those procedural policies more powerful is that when the administration decides to change something, they should talk to the people actually on the ground, have to put those things into operation about what those procedural procedures should be, rather than just making the change. And the first thing we know about it is you get a phone call from somebody in that saying, you didn't do the whatever with the whatever. That's not how it used to be. And first of all, you say, well, why is that written down? Well, it's not actually written down anywhere. So you can hear a certain level of frustration here. And I'm talking about the business level, not the, I'm on an RPI office, I'm talking about a whole business, a whole business that is now in progress. But the administrative level is really important. And in a week, it's going to be really serious, but there has to be, there has to be real cooperation and real exchange of information and procedures to actually bring the people into this direction, when trying to make it work and not just have decisions being made down there with those people as frankly, as it is. I'm not a damn good guy.
Could I just comment on Adrian's point? I think that's a critically important point, that we really need faculty input on these. And I think that it will be good for the administration as well because if, not only can faculty give sort of on-the-ground feedback, but they can, by involving them in the process, they can then not only have an effect, but go out amidst the masses of faculty and convey to explain why this occurred. So I think it's good from all angles to have, you know, constructive faculty input on these very real logistical hurdles that the administration is confronting, confronted with.
Before I call on you, Karina, just one comment also. And I'm sure Adrian, more than anybody else, you're aware of all of this. Times have changed and not only at the federal and the state level in terms of requirements for this kind of monies, but in the CSU itself. And we are not alone in these frustrations. When I sit at my chief research officer meeting, I hear the same things over and over again that our campus is not unusual. The one thing I do want to mention though, that I think is interesting, is there are two models in the CSU who are processing grants and contracts. One foundation model and the other stateside model. And it's a real disconnect for the CSU as a whole. And our meetings are spent because when you're stateside, you have to follow certain rules and when you're foundation, you have to follow certain rules. So it has created a real mess for the chancellor's office on how to kind of come up with a concerted procedures. I'm not saying that to make any excuses, but I just want you to know that it's not just our campus, it's the whole picture of the CSU that is facing this. And I thank you for your comments about the manual. I think we, again, we are almost at the point where we can do that now with the structure that you saw today in place. Jeff, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Just to echo what you've said, we have talked about processes and procedures and we've been told by the chancellor's office that they're going to be issuing processes and procedures. So we're hesitant to issue our own in case they come back with something that conflicts. So that's part of the holdup on that.
Karina, you had a- Karina, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I totally appreciate Adrian's perspective on this. I've been equally frustrated at times, as I think many of us have been, but I'm also like to paint an optimistic face on this, because otherwise we'll get too depressed in the book. But I think we have a real opportunity here. I think I echoed that statement at the Research Expo, but I think you're seeing a lot of really great, positive energy today and sort of good ties happening. We've got good people with good ideas, with energy, and I think you're seeing a lot of more communication between faculty affairs and administration of finance in a more positive way, and I think we need to build on that momentum. And I think this position is an opportunity to do that, and I hope we could all move forward with a positive outlook and try to make things work as simply as possible. I think, I think people are on board with that overall. That's all I want to say.
Oh, you're great. Thank you for that positive. One more question, and then we'll, oh, we've got two more questions. Okay, in the back.
Is there a target for the CSU?
She's asking if there's a target deadline for the policy.
Last fall. And it goes directly to Melinda's comment about the conflict between foundation-based programs and stateside.
Oh, so, Frank, you had a question? Yeah, you talk about research and scholarly projects, and all the examples have been about research. And as somebody that is involved in some scholarly projects where our students make an impact on the community and partner with various community agencies, I've noticed that occasionally the dean will send out, you know, you've got to check out these great foundations and grant possibilities, and they're all for research. So I just want to sort of jump up and down a bit and say, remember, you know, I love anything you can send our way also for scholarly projects.
That's almost like a plant question for me, because that's one of the issues that has been very concerning to me as well. In my last institution, an enormous amount of the grant money that we got in our department was for private foundation funding for project-related activities on campus that were not specifically research. And that's something that our, my old department, we had a whole focus on that, and we sent out a monthly, or bimonthly, every two weeks, funding sampler that targeted project-based funding from private foundations and other, there are some government sources, but that that we could, that the campus could access, because a lot of what goes on is research, but a whole other portion is other projects that are academic in focus, because they're related to some kind of educational learning, be it the students, faculty-student collaboration, or helping the community at large become educated on a particular issue that we're really not tapping into here to any level like we should be. And so I'm hoping that some future resources can really be focused on that area. And in my strategic planning process that is beginning, I've already identified that as an issue for the provost's office. Thank you, I appreciate that.
So just to wrap up, I do want to say, following Karina's wonderful comments, that not only are we excited to be a part of this, but I really want to thank you for being here and listening, but also because you're the people that support research and scholarly projects on this campus, and that you're the ones that will be going out and verbalizing what you heard today, letting people know. And thank you for coming, and thank you for supporting research. I really appreciate it.